Can't have that.
Ready?
Even though it's.
Ready? Ready? Good evening. Welcome to our council meeting for October 23rd. I'm showing it's just about 7:32 PM. Mrs. R.C.C., would you call the parole, please?
Ms. Darryl here. Mr. Engel?
Here.
Ms. Hanekin?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
I would like to ask everyone to stand as council president. Dave Engel leads us in the pledge of allegiance and then Jan Tully will say the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, as we gather together, help us to believe in the impossible and remove the improbable. Let us remember tonight that impossible equals I'm possible. That working together, anything can be done. That working together, we can focus on the residents. That working together, we can stop the gossip and focus on the residents. That working together, we can treat others with respect and focus on the residents. That working together with the administration, the department heads and our employees, we can focus on the roads, stormwater and safety for the residents. Help us to work together. Thank you.
All right, are there any changes to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to accept? We have September 11th, September 25th and October 9th.
Mr. Mayor, I did review the minutes and there are some modifications that are needed. I was, I do think we should just hold this for the next meeting. And there were a number of typos and incorrect words that I needed to make corrections to, but I didn't have time this afternoon. So I think we could just hold them, that would be fine. And I'll provide the information to Josephine.
All right. Moving on. We have a gentleman that's been giving of himself for a lot of years. A gentleman by the name of Nick Pintagro. Tonight, I have a certificate of appreciation for Nick. Whereas Nick Pintagro has served this community well for 19 years at the, in the capacity of clerk treasurer of the North Hill Macedonia Cemetery. And whereas Nick has announced his plan to resign on November 1st, 2014 and is being honored by his friends and coworkers who are deeply appreciative of his many contributions to the community throughout the years. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor and on behalf of our governing body and all of our citizens, I do hereby tender this certificate of appreciation to Nick Pintagro, extending our best wishes to him and his entire family for such success and happiness in the future. He really is a great man and a good guy.
John, he's, I don't think he's here, but I could get it to him.
We're going to be having another meeting.
We need to pick another up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda tonight is comments by the public. We ask you to sign in and limit your comments to five minutes. We have some people that have signed in tonight. When I call your name, if you would please come to the front and state your name and address. And then John, could you watch the time for five minutes?
I'll do that for you, Mayor.
That way, we can concentrate on what they're saying. Okay. First on the list this evening is John Madajic. Did I say that right?
Madajic.
Madajic. Okay.
How you doing, Council Mayor? First, I want to thank Sylvia, Rita, Dave and Nick for coming out to the house and seeing the issues we have with our cricks. And I want to thank Jim for stopping over today to get a sample of the black water that we got coming down to the creek bed today. The other thing I'd like to address is an issue that you get a million emails about the RHOA issue. And I had sent everybody emails of our declarations, our budget, what we voted on. And this copy here is what we, our annual budget, what we voted on. And the big, the argument is, is that there was no discussion or voting on a patio in our developments. Now, when I went to the planning commission, I brought this information forward and then it was basically ignored. And then I got this email that thanks to Kevin at the end of the meeting said that he had sent this email out where it states that he did not have consent to build a patio. It's just, it's just his email and I can read it to you, everybody, so everybody knows what it says here. It says here, "We presented in writing a budget that showed we intended to put in a fountain in the lake and a scenery in the neighborhood. If you want to argue that we switched to constructing a patio without any consent of the neighborhood, I understand. But I hope you realize that we didn't do it, we did it in the neighborhood's best interest." I don't think that's justification for skipping our declarations and putting in writing that you didn't have consent to build a patio for 20 some thousand dollars. And then the building department gives them a building permit for something that they don't have right to do. Now, if you look at a poster that they have in the building department, it says right here that you have to have process permits in accordance with the provisions set forth by the fortified ordinances. But according to fortified ordinance 892000, as it pertains to developments, it states, 11/29/05, "No person shall neglect or refuse to comply with or otherwise violate any provisions of the subdivision regulations." I don't know how someone that says they built something, consent of the homeowners is not in violation of this ordinance. And according to this ordinance, there's actually something regarding being fined for the misdemeanor of first degree. I just need an explanation from somebody how you circumvent your own building codes and ordinances when you have documentation approved that from himself said he did.
I. I could tell you, I could answer this really quickly.
Sure.
Project was approved through the planning commission. We have HOA approval, HOA submitted the application. We have a letter from the HOA saying that they approved of the project and we gave one permit out for a patio. It's an engineering permit. That's all we gave. Everything was followed by the law.
So what does this mean? This means nothing? That the HOA president says he doesn't have consent and the neighbors should be upset that he's building it without their consent?
The HOA president's right here. And if you read it, it says, "Argue the point." You know, do we want to argue the point here in city council?
Point the, what's? I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to address you. It's just.
It says, "You can argue the point."
I just want to know what I can do, because there's obviously something I could do with the BZA or somebody, because obviously with this documentation that he didn't have consent to build it, what options do we have? Because this is a dangerous precedence being set right here. If the planning commission and the building department is giving building permits and planning consent, does somebody even have authorization to do it?
The city regulates and makes sure that things are done to a standard, John. All right? What the things are and is, is not our decision whether they can be built or not when you have a homeowners association. Your argument is among yourselves, the city was asked, "Does this meet specifications?" And the city said, "Yep, it does." So an engineering permit was issued that it met specifications. That's all, not saying it's okay to build it or do whatever. It strictly says that it's within specs and follows our laws.
Okay, at the planning commission meeting, Mayor, if you remember correctly, as you sat right there, Kevin was in front of you, you asked him if he has, had authorization to put in an application for the build. He said yes. This document that he knew, he wrote on 23rd of July, knew that he didn't have consent because this is what he put.
It's five minutes.
Well, five minutes.
Five minutes.
All right.
Okay.
That's five.
Have a nice evening.
I'd actually like to ask a question if I can.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to follow this, but it seemed like you were saying, and Mike's comments were that we have no play in any of this in terms of our zoning ordinances? As far as if it's saying that we have to, we have to ensure that these declarations of covenants and restrictions are in fact enforced, which seems to be what he's saying. Are you saying that is not the case?
They went to the planning commission and they got approval from not only the city planner, but from the commission itself.
Well, I get that, but you mean, so we can override them that?
The planning commission can override the original site drawings. If, if the HOA comes it forward and offers a plan to the planning commission, they're just altered their site approval. That's what their site approval is now. It includes the patio and the walls.
Okay, well, I get that idea. I'm just saying, are we saying that if the HOA internal declarations are not followed, it's not our business? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, is it, is it my job to look once I get a letter from the homeowners association saying that?
Well, I don't know, I'm asking it.
I, I don't, I don't go in depth. Once I get an approval from the homeowners association saying this project is approved, I don't look any further.
Okay, so from that standpoint, you're saying that even though our ordinances say something to the effect we're enforcing those declarations, we really are not?
I think that the enforcement would come, "Do I have a letter from the homeowners association?"
Okay, so that's what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh. Okay.
That's what we're claiming.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question of Mr. Feeney?
Yes.
Mr. Feeney, this is related, but not on John's topic, and I'm sorry, John. About two months ago, there was an issue that we were going to get the sand tested out there. Has that test been done and do we know the outcome of it?
No, the test isn't done yet. Service department did hire solar testing labs. Solar testing labs is going to be on site to conduct that test.
Do we know when that, sorry?
They were supposed to have started October 15th.
Okay.
To start, they, they have to start their testing.
Oh, I didn't realize it was, that was so far out. Okay. Do we know when it's going to be done?
No, but I can give them a call and see where they're at.
All right, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
All right, next is Rick, and I'm sorry, I can't get your last name.
It's Peach. I just, to be honest with you, I just signed that in case I wanted to make a comment.
Okay.
I, I just want to apologize for the homeowners association. This is something internal to that and it shouldn't be wasting the city council's time.
Thank you. All right, moving on, Barb Delucos. Barb?
I have three things that I want to discuss quickly in my five minutes. The first thing is alleged road underpass the bridge. Now that it's back open again, the city has opened it. Is the city responsible for the damage? Maybe it isn't a vehicle, maybe it's a child on a bicycle. Who is responsible for this damage now?
The railroad.
But we opened that road knowing it's unsafe. That's all I'm going to say. The other thing is, I was reading in the news leader that there was controversy over the mayor getting snow plowing. Our mayor must be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We don't know what emergency is going to come up. Hopefully, none. The day my daughter was killed, Joe Miglerini was at that railroad track, was at the school and was at the hospital, the emergency room, by the time I got there. He did all these things. He went and notified the funeral home. That was a personal friend, but also he saw that we could not do this. There are many things our mayor has to do, many things that people on council don't even know about. Maybe he goes out and checks on some building site. Maybe he goes out and checks to make sure the leaves are being picked up. If they're going to plow his driveway, what different? He's a senior citizen. We get no breaks other than arthritis and aspirin, right?
Yep.
The other thing is, our community voted and we elected Don Kuchka as our mayor. Our mayor to run the city. I was under the impression that when we elected our mayor, he was like at the head. His word and his thoughts are what we want. Under him comes council. It seems to me that we elected council to run the city. And this is wrong. Your job is to work with the mayor and with the residents, not to make your own and oppose everything he says. The other thing is, I was reading about our finance director and I have questions that I don't see will be answered tonight, but it stated in the paper that he was putting our city, Macedonia city business, on his personal computer to take home and work on. Now, is he getting paid for those hours he's at home? Do we know who else is looking at his personal computer? Are his kids? Did his kids think it was funny to change something? That's his personal computer. It should not have our city business on it or Canal Fulton's. I come in here and I share my feelings with you, but I don't show you my finance papers. Those are personal. Those should not be shown to everybody. And when he takes our business out of this city hall, he's making it public to anybody and everybody. Somebody break in his car? Who cares? And I think this is really, really wrong. And if he's doing that much work, are we paying him to work at home? That's what I have to ask. I don't want my city's financial records taken wherever he might decide to go. This is wrong. And does Canal Fulton know that their records are being taken all over? Tomorrow, I'm calling.
All right. Moving on. Kurt Lobbinger.
Thank you. Is there one for me, sir?
One for everybody and one for you. Thank you, Josephine. I'm Kurt Lobbinger. I live on Ledge Road. Everything I'm saying tonight is my opinion and my opinion only. I passed out a little block of pictures for each one of you to take a look at. And this has to do with Ledge Road. If you look at the first picture, which says road closed ahead on it, says east on the back. That's the one I'm referring to first. Immediately behind the road closed ahead is Freeway Drive. You can see the road, how it's deteriorated in front of the sign, road closed ahead. Take a look at that, east, how bad that is. Now, take a look at the next picture in your packet, which is west on the back. I'm standing at the road closed sign and I'm looking west. Take a look at the road for about 100 feet up, how bad that road is. This didn't just happen. I've been watching this for a year and a half. This is a safety problem when the cars come down there, there's an eight inch drop off of that. Anybody can roll a car. People coming out of, out of Freeway Drive, a car hits that, they head right for them. I've seen that happen. This has been like this for a year and a half. Now, how can all you people and Mayor as service director, or not service director, I'm sorry, as in charge, a safety director, not see this in this time and fix this? How cannot city employees see this and fix it? It's terrible, a year and a half. We don't need to give you more money to fix roads when we can't take care of what this is and you don't see it. If this would have been fixed a year and a half ago, this washing would have been here. We would have saved the road. We would have backfilled it in and saved the road. It's not right. The last picture I'm showing you is a picture of the stop sign in the corner of Ledge Road. There's a post laying there. A truck rolled over this sign a couple of months ago. A new stop sign was put up. There lays the old post in the ground. It looks like heck. Why can't we send a truck over there, pull a chain on it and pull it out? It's things like this that make our town look bad. Somebody isn't doing something. The next thing I'd like to talk about is Firestone. Two years ago, in this very spot, probably on that very screen, we talked about ash borer. The mayor told us how bad the trees were. Our arborists told us this. Ash trees, when they go bad, wham, in a year's time, they deteriorate, they blow over and we got a problem. That was two years ago. Last week, I heard you talk about having some money for trees. You're going to take out trees in Sugar Bush. Any money that's left is going to go over to Longwood to take out trees. There are 15 dead trees along Firestone and Bishop. Every day, kids walk through there from Leighton School. People walk through there, cars drive through there. You yourself said, Mayor, these trees can come down. They're dangerous. We need to take them down. A year and a half, I've been watching those trees. They're still there. A few of them died now this summer. They're still there. You've taken some trees down over along the Crow area back behind the Ceres and Robach store, those whole, those streets back in there. These trees are dead. You've had to drive by them, you've had to see them, you know they're dangerous. You're talking about safety? You get after Northern Ohio or the railroad track over here? We need to look at our own problems and get them taken care of. It's a safety problem, Mayor. And when you talk about who's in charge when the bridge comes down, well, it's Norfolk. That's fine. Who's in charge when a tree off, or a tree lawn falls and hurts some little kid or a car gets in an accident off this road? Macedonia is in trouble and our safety director. And maybe for those working on the charter commission, we might take a look and see that the city is getting bigger. We have more and more trees and more and more streets and things going on that perhaps we should take the safety director away from the mayor. The mayor has enough other jobs to do and maybe we ought to be creating a separate position as safety director to take care of our streets and take further, take a look at that. Thanks.
Jim, do you remember how many trees overall we have that have to come down? I know that's a, not without warning, that's kind of a.
It's been an issue that I've been talking about for quite a while. We need the funding to finish these trees. They have to come down. I have over 200 stumps that need to be ground. We did cut down over 200 trees. There are more that have to come down, but I just can't send people out when I don't have the funding for it. And, and if there's a line item that has, we have some tree money in it, but it's for developments, period. And it's for new trees. We need to have funding for the trees that people will call me Crow. I turn every, everything over to our arborists. This is something that I've been talking about. We, we have trees like on Crow, that's a 40, a 30-year-old development. They die, they come down. We have to replace them. Well, we need the money to replace them. So these are things we've been asking for. And I talked to Sylvia, I talked with council in regards to this year's budget to get money. I, I have pricing coming in for Ashburn, Davy Tree and Fromm Mueller to actually trim all the trees in the city, give us a price. We can't do it, so you get a contractor to do it. We, we need funding for the trees that have to be replaced and trees that have to cut down. By tomorrow or hopefully by Monday, I'll have an inventory of the trees that have to come down, the monies we will need to do that. And then, once council appropriates that money, we'll be able to do it. But right now, I only have money for developments and just enough to put in trees that they have coming to them. And that's where we're at right now. That's why those haven't been addressed yet. We've just got to wait until we have everything in place.
Can we look into a cost of potentially having that farmed out? I mean, I know our service department's working on a lot of stormwater issues right now. Could we look into a cost to address that and not only that, some other issues?
Right.
I want to make a little comment about what Mr. Lobbinger pointed out. The pictures of the road are terrible. The irony of this is, we talked about paving roads. We have 33 rated poor. We were told by the chair of finance that we had enough money to address these issues going forward. In the next two years, we're going to pave five roads. This one's not even on it. When we talked about voting for a levy which costs the residents zero, unless you worked in town, we wouldn't even give it to the voters. How are we going to pave 33 roads? Five roads, two years. This one's not even on it. That's concerning.
We have legislation this evening for full depth repairs. Full depth repairs is when you make a pretty serious repair where you get down to the base of the road and not just filling a charcoal. So we're going to have about 65,000. Jim, how much will that do?
Well, I made a list and it's very expensive to do that. 65,000 will get us, you know, a few sections on each road that I went on. There's much more to do. I've asked for additional funding again for the spring coming up, additional full depth. The list I made right now, the 65,000 is not going to cover it. They'll do as much as they can. They'll do the ones that are the worst. And then, you know, next year, if I have money appropriated for it, I will do additional. We'll go out for bids again and we will do as many as we can. It's an expensive process. It's not cheap. You're talking about anywhere from a low bid of 100 to high bid of 170, I'm sorry, $275 a yard, square yard. And, you know, you've got to figure in the depth and the width and the length when you figure in square yards. So one hole could cost, one, one repair can be $9,000. So these are, this is why I'm asking for additional funding. But the 65, though, will get us quite a few roads. Well, we'll do a little bit for everybody so that everybody will see some kind of repair on their road.
Your original quest was over 100, correct?
Uh, yes.
Over 100, and you got cut down to 65.
We, we went down to 85 and then it went down to 60.
Who cut that?
I was on vacation when it was cut. But anyways, just to make everybody understand, we will do what we can. We'll fix them. And then this year, when I'm getting additional funding, I will fix more. And I will fix what I'm allowed, the monies that are given to me. And that's how we'll fix them.
Your, your question about the trees? I know we're coming around to, I don't want to say it, but snow time. Is there ability to get bids and still get those trees cared for before we face ice, snow? And which just adds weight to trees that are.
I've been told by a lot of these gentlemen, unless it's a full-blown blizzard, you know, if it's cold out, the cold's not going to stop them from cutting a tree down. You know, that's not a problem. They want to do that type of work in the winter.
They do it in the winter.
You could have this for us for the next council meeting because we meet in two weeks, that we could appropriate the dollars so we can get.
I have Ashburn, Davy Tree and Mueller Tree are giving me prices to cut and trim all the trees in the city, like you see Twinsburg doing, you see all the other communities doing. Because we don't have the help to trim these trees. People, and what I mean by trimming the trees are people who walk down the sidewalk and get hit by a branch. We're going to fix them. The other trees, we are going to address. We're, I have a couple of about six companies checking into what's involved in doing this work. We have the, we have the contract. I have one arborist. He can't cut these down by himself. He can't cut these down by himself. And then, I have another man to help him. Can't do it. We need to look at having contractors who come in and just take care of it. And that's what we'll need funding for. And I'll have those prices for you by next Council.
Right. We were going to have a Finance meeting on the thirtieth, and I've asked for prices in a number of areas and contract prices, particularly because we need to do some of this work with contractors. So, I think looking at what our tax take is throughout the year here, we're going to be able to accommodate those things. And definitely, for next year, we will have additional areas for full-depth repair and road repair. There are going to be some additional roads repaired. According to what my understanding was, our discussion is that, for example, Westwood actually has a twelve-inch asphalt base, which we were surprised by. And because of that, we're going to be able to do a mill and fill rather than a recycle repave. So, I think there's a lot going on. We are working very hard on making sure we allocate, it's going to be over a million dollars for sure for these roads. But beyond that, we need to know exactly how much it costs and what we need to do to get there from here. Everybody wants to have the roads repaired. So, thanks.
And that's why we need to, as soon as possible, in February, go out for bids.
Yeah, I know. I talked to Mo Darwish about that while I was at the AMITs meeting, and he indicated he wants to, he thinks it's the best time to go out would be in January. And we should be able to achieve that where the budget schedule's going. So, thanks.
At the point is, we procrastinated. We were told, we didn't know if we had the money. We had the money. It did not come forward when it should have. We're not going to procrastinate anymore. These are two important of issues. We need to get these issues taken care of. If we say we have the money and we knew we had the money, we should have voted on it and put it forth. We waited too long on the roads. Well, now that when we went out to bids, it was late in the season. And anyone who's in that business knows the later you wait, the more busier they are. The cost is going to help. I don't want to wait till next year for the trees. That's why I'm hoping you have those dollars. Again, when I look at the budget for next year, I'm not sure I see the dollars for the trees for next year, too. We need to make sure it's ongoing. Thank you.
Yeah, that's something we've been talking about for a while.
When he gets the bids, he gets the idea of pricing, we can certainly look at it.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember being told that if we spend a million dollars a year, it would take twenty years before we got back to Street One. The Safety Director of this city, Mike, the figure for all the roadwork that was done in the eleven years that I've been here up through the 271 project is in excess of three hundred million.
Correct.
That's a lot, a lot of streets done, big jobs done in an eleven-year span. Three hundred million. And right now, the only debt that the city has is for two-point-seven million, and that was at two percent for twenty years. So, that's not bad. All right, moving on to Kevin. Kevin Belkey?
Hello, my name is Kevin Belkey. I live in Lake Forest Estates. And I was here tonight to stop the outcry and the outrage that we put a patio in. I know there's a lot of people here from Lake Forest. You guys want to raise your hand? So, are any of you outraged that we put a patio in? So, not to put anyone on the spot. I guess I could present you with facts. I can present you with the argument, but there's no need. I mean, we're dealing with somebody who has one email that I sent not to him, and it said you can argue the point. Because we did have consent to put in the patio. We're the HOA board. We passed a dues increase. We took that money, and we voted as a board to create a budget. With that budget, we put in the patio. It's remarkable that I am here. We're talking about something important like the roads in our city, and I have to waste everybody's time because one gentleman in our neighborhood thinks that we are out to get everybody by doing this. So, I did have one question of the Council. Because I guess, I don't know why I'm here. Is this not a city issue? And I guess where is, who got the complaint? Like, where were the complainers that I now got the HOA and then the people in my development involved? Does no one, did anyone get a complaint from anyone in our neighborhood?
Yes, we've gotten complaints, sure.
How many complaints did you get?
I've gotten six.
Six complaints?
There was a gentleman who lives across from the patio, also was complaining.
I addressed him, and I did apologize to him.
Yeah, he felt that he wasn't consulted and...
Well, do you know that he did not vote?
I don't know anything about it.
Okay, exactly. So, it is an HOA issue. And now, I'm here talking to the City Council about it, which is incredibly waste of my time, everybody here's time. And so, can all agree, can we just move on?
I asked the question earlier. If you're following your declarations and covenants, then everything is great. Mike indicated that they, in fact, we do not require that those things be certified by him or anybody.
Ms. Dar, you voted no at the, when we tried to get our permit. Can I ask you why? Like, why did you vote no? Did we not present a sound structure? That's the Engineering Department and the Building Department passed, but yet you said no? I just kind of want to know why.
That's my opinion. I voted no.
Your opinion on what?
I'm allowed to vote the way I feel fit to vote. I felt that it should have been tabled. And if I want to vote no, I could vote no.
And you won't elaborate here?
No.
Thank you very much.
All right, that's it for our comments by the public this evening. And we're going to move right into pending and/or new legislative items, starting with Resolution 100-2014.
Mayor, before, I just had one more other thing. I forgot to say it, that we did get sewage water, and I think you came out and saw it. But Stephen Knotts, who lives on Riegel Ridge, had asked for an easement. He has a culvert under, and it's these kind of, we, I did talk to Mike and Nick before the City Council meeting. But what would be the next step? He has, we have the stream. Everyone knows about it, has sand in it. But as of right now, this gentleman lives in a house in Macedonia. And I guess from what I've heard, he is responsible for the culvert if it breaks down. So, we would like somehow to work with the city to get an easement. He came here a couple of weeks ago and explained this to everybody. But is there a way, like, what would be, he wanted to ask me to ask you, what would be the next step for the city to come in and take control over that culvert and those two, you know, entranceway where the water runs through?
I'm actually working on that. I had initiated that because when I went out to look at the property, and it's due to, you know, I work for another Service Department in another community. And given the size of that, I guess it would be a bridge because it's over eight foot in front of his yard. I think that's something that we need to take on. So, I've been working with the Engineering Department to figure out what type of legislation we need to put forward for us to take responsibility of that easement. Because if that thing fails in front of his yard, he's going to go bankrupt. I mean, I know, I know from experience doing it that that's a big issue. That is a very large easement. And I'm trying to put it on us to take control of that because it's something that I don't feel he should be responsible for anybody in that neighborhood.
I will let him know. Thank you.
All right. Now, moving on, pending our new legislative items, starting with Resolution 100-2014.
Mayor, I'd like to have the Resolution Number 100-2014 for its second and third reading. And I'm sorry, Joseph, it'll be by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
An emergency resolution declaring the necessity and intention to appropriate for street purposes certain fees, simple interests, and easements in and to various premises along South Freeway Drive and State Route 82 to facilitate the I-271 northbound entrance ramp relocation from State Route 82 to connect with the new ramp from South Freeway Drive to widen State Route 82 to install Sixth Lane between Macedonia Commons Boulevard and the Overhead Railroad Bridge, with the additional lanes serving as a left-turn lane, with the exiting left-turn lanes from State Route 82 to South Freeway Drive and Macedonia Commons to be lengthened, excuse me, Macedonia Commons to be lengthened, all providing access to a new 271 northbound entrance ramp off of South Freeway Drive, all together with the certain necessary appurtenances thereto, further identified as PID number 97084, with the county route section number of SUM 271 12.65.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law Resolution Number 100-2014, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Very good. Moving on with Ordinance Number 101-2014.
I'd like to offer Ordinance 101-2014 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
An ordinance confirming the final appointment by the mayor of Kyle Horish to the position of full-time police officer.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law Ordinance 101-2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 101-2014 passes. John, a couple of words?
Kyle's doing a fine job. It's his first year anniversary. He's working nights, so you never see him. But a fine young man. He's a Buckeye. Went to Ohio State, so go Buckeyes.
All right. Ordinance Number 102-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance 102-2014 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Mid-Ohio Asphalt and Concrete Inc. for the 2014 full-depth pavement repairs for various streets with the city of Macedonia.
And what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post Ordinance 102-2014 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance 102-2014 passes. Ordinance Number 103-2014, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance 103-2014 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
An ordinance authorizing appropriation of funds from unencumbered fund balance to provide for current expenses of the city of Macedonia.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend Ordinance 103-2014 in section two to eliminate all but the following two items. These two items should be retained. It's a recreation capital improvements move to recreation professional services for ten thousand dollars. And the movement from unencumbered balance to 101-101-566 of three-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Did you want to, I, oh, you did, you did say that. Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
No.
And Mr. Molner?
Reason for the no vote is there's two items on there, one of which is legal fees. Here again, we're choking off money that the administration needs to pay bills, taking that away. Another one is computer maintenance. Don't see why we would take that away from them. So, my vote is no.
Resolution Number 104-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Resolution 104-2014 for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary taxes, not taxis, and levies and certifying them to Summit County Fiscal Office.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post Ordinance 104-2014.
Second.
according to law.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right. Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to allocate thirty-five thousand dollars for the 2015 Spirit of Macedonia Festival in order to allow us to begin working on it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'd also like to point out that there's a typo in the budget just for housekeeping. It's coming out of Budget Number 205.207. It's nine-nine-nine on there. It needs to have another nine on the end of it, just for bookkeeping purposes.
Let me see, there's a typo.
I'd also like to make a motion to cancel the regular Council meeting of November 27th. As much as I enjoy all of your company, I'd like to spend Thanksgiving with my family.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
I'm sorry, who was the second on that? You threw me. You were too early.
Me for Thanksgiving.
Um, it was, okay. No, I usually have it on...
I know.
Yes.
The other quarter.
Agenda button.
Fine.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Moving on to correspondence from the clerk.
I just have one, sir. This is a resident from Eileen Drive, residence, I should say, excuse me, Bob and Bernice Posar. Dear Jim, we, the Posars, at 876 Eileen Drive, would like to thank you for your part in dealing with our concerns with the stormwater drain situation. We know that you had many unexpected situations happening with this project, but you were working to make things right. For this, we would like to thank you very much.
Anything else? That's it? Mayor's report. I'll tell you what, if any of you have any free time on Friday evenings, I highly recommend attending a Nordonia High School football game. The Nordonia team itself is undefeated, but the games offer even more than just excellent football. A lot of people are unaware that the spectacle can involve more than two-hundred students. Besides the players, we have at least a couple of dozen cheerleaders and an award-winning band. Our band is so good that people come to the games just to watch them. When they are lined up on the field as they march on, the band, the flag girls, go from the fifteen-yard line on the north end all the way to the fifteen-yard line on the south end of the field. The quality of sound, maneuvers they perform are nothing less than spectacular. You really have to see it to believe it. And then, of course, we have our new stadium, so that provides ample seating and excellent handicap facilities and seats, where you can get a good seat if you're handicapped where you can get a good seat if you're handicapped without even having to go up into the bleachers. Give it a try one Friday and be proud of all these outstanding students. They really work hard. I, it's amazing the discipline and hard work that goes into making the Nordonia Hills school system a reputation for do, for producing the best at what those people do. Ledge Road is open, but all we can do is warn you that it can be dangerous when a train is crossing it. Please travel this road at your own risk. The liability falls on Norfolk Southern. And now they've sent us, uh, word that they are going to do nothing more than what they've done. And the only alternative that we would have to get anything further done, um, would be to take them to court. So far, their repairs consist of chicken wire and spray foam insulation. And the only satisfying fix for this bridge really is a new one. We had a lot of thought that went into that. You know, it's, it's really tough because there's as many people that want the road open as want the road closed. So what we tried to do is the following. We posted flashing lights and warning signs to alert drivers of the dangers. And the reason we feel that we've got to do something to let people move around because it's the only east-west route on the entire northern half of the city. The safety forces response time is slowed by this road being closed, so we have to consider that. And Norfolk Southern told us to take a long walk on a short pier, so they're not going to do anything. It is your personal choice to drive under the bridge or not, and let me tell you that the schools have decided not to drive under the bridge. So the school buses go all the way around the long way. Even though the road is open, the kids are not going through there. And then we have this problem when Ledge Road is closed, where all the traffic starts backing up someplace else. So we create congestion by having that closed and by having it open and some of the people going through, um, at least we get less congestion. I was there today with the reporter. This is a side stone that can fall through that chicken wire. You know, if something like this hit my car, I think I'd want to kill somebody. I mean, it can break a windshield, it can put a dent. It's, it's absolutely terrible. And we have gone as far as writing a formal complaint to the Federal Railroad Administration. We have filed a formal complaint with Puco, Public Utilities Commission. And this has been weeks and we've heard nothing. And I feel that's absolutely terrible, that this bridge not only is dangerous because of these damn stones falling down, but it also could collapse. And if it collapsed, it'll be one of the greatest calamities you would ever see because not only will Macedonia residents be killed, but people driving above it on the 271 bridge could very well come down real fast and end up killed. It's just a terrible situation. I wish that I could do something more to make this happen. And I am very grateful for all those people who have sent me emails in regards to what can be done with this bridge. You know, it's always good to keep an open mind. Maybe there's somebody out there that can give us some advice. For instance, I had a man write me that was on the railroad and worked for them for 37 years. And he said, "Mayor, you can make those trains go slower. You would be able to get an injunction against the railroad to do that." His recommendation was a 10 mile an hour speed limit. Well, how fast did the trains go as they go through Macedonia loaded with double-decked cars and tankers that have been proven not to be made of the gauge necessary to not burst if something should happen? They travel at speeds of 52 to 58 miles an hour. How do I know that? It's called radar. We've radared the trains and that's how fast they go. So 50, 60 miles an hour and something happened to that bridge. And when you have cars that go from horizon to horizon, there are so many of them, and you have three locomotives pulling them, it's going to be hell to pay. So I wish I could do more, but right now, they've got us. And I can't even get help because we have gone and tried every avenue. In fact, we've been working with our congressman, Congressman Joyce. The railroads are independent from the rest of the country. They kind of do what they want to do. Unfortunately, this is the fourth time I'm dealing with them. We dealt with them on Route 82 and had to get a contract for us to build them a new bridge, which is worth $6 million. Then we went to Highland. We had to get a contract with them to allow us to build a bridge for 12 million that they don't have to do any upgrade crossing repairs. And there's a lot of trucks on that road and they tore that crossing up continuously. And then we went to Twinsburg Road and made that intersection safer by putting up a quiet zone. And what is required for a quiet zone helps make that intersection safer. That was paid for with the federal stimulus money. So we've done everything humanly possible as a city to try and protect our citizens. Ledge Road is their baby, not ours. And how in the heck are we going to make them get off their dead and fix it? So if you have any ideas, believe me, I'm wide open to them. And taking them to court might be our only option. That ends my report for this night. Are there any committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, uh, the Finance Committee has met on the 15th and 16th of October. Uh, the 16th, we had a, an extensive meeting on each departmental budget. We've asked for any feedback, uh, by actually COB tomorrow for any adjustments. And we will have a meeting on Thursday, October 30th to go through the, uh, adjustments to the budget that we're going to have for FY 2015. The good news is that we do have a significant, uh, in fact, we have, at this point, we have 1% more money than we did last year when we had a 1/4% income tax in addition to the 2%. But, uh, this year, we're doing very well. It's partly due to the recovery in the economy and also partly due to, uh, the fact that we do have some significant business net profit tax contribution into our income tax. So all in all, I'd say, uh, looks like we should finish the budget on the schedule we talked about that will permit us to go for, uh, not only full-depth repairs, but repairs to major roadways in the city. And, uh, I'm feeling fairly confident that we'll be able to resolve any issues and be able to get these items resolved by the 30th of October, and then we're just going to go through readings with them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Planning Commission, uh, will meet Monday, November 17th at 5:30. And, um, I was not in attendance at, uh, Monday's planning meeting. If you have anything, uh, regarding that meeting, uh, Mr. Mayor, I...
Well, um, the meeting just ended five minutes ago. Actually, no. It was a long, long meeting, but boy, did we get a lot accomplished. And it's very, very important to realize, this is all good stuff. This is about new businesses coming into town, people upgrading the businesses that they have. There was a lot of signage, um, that had to be approved. Charming Charlie's is coming to the commons. One of the biggest issues that night, uh, was we're talking conceptually now where GetGo is going to build a gas station complex like you've never seen before in your life. This is a first of a new style. They call it a flagship rendition of a gas station combined with the restaurant with future use possibly, where they pull in the big trucks and take care of them in the back. How big will it be? Well, you know where the station is now on the corner of Highland and Route 8. There is a GetGo station there. But the station that will be built will be built where Dos Coronas is now, where the motel is and where the gas station is. And that's a huge area, so it's going to be big. It's going to be very, very unique. I think it's going to do very, very well because, uh, gas stations are getting away from the old damage that they have and they're getting into more and more convenience items. So you'll actually be able to get your gas and go inside and sit down at a table and grab a sandwich or grab some of the other items that they will sell. It's going to be big. It's going to be good. Uh, we're working out the details with them on that. So all things considered, like for instance, this, uh, uh, store that they're going to, one of the stores that's on the corner of 8 and 82 and the new building that's going up is going to be a place where they serve breakfast. And they are called First Watch. And we approved their sign and this will be another attraction. Once this development there is done, that'll be a showcase for our community. I just received word today again that they're trying to work out having a motel come into our town and be located across the street from Speedway. We're working with them. We're trying to make it happen. If you think about it, there's going to be a big, beautiful building there with the Assisted Living Center that's being built. And then, of course, you're going to have these new duplex homes that are high-end rental. And then you might have this motel, and that would go very good when say, for instance, people are coming from out of town to visit someone in the assisted living facility. So there's a lot of exciting pla, uh, things happening. Macedonia is getting to be the place to be. And boy, are we busy. How many homes are being built, Mike?
Uh, we're on schedule for 50 this year, 55.
And other communities, five, 10, maybe, but 55 homes. So there's a lot going on. Are there any other committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, Charter Review will hold its first meeting, an organizational meeting, on Wednesday, November 19th at 3, uh, excuse me, at 6:30.
Are there any other committee reports? Hearing none. Department reports. Jim?
Okay, Mayor, uh, just, uh, we started the leaf pickup on Monday. We have, at this time, we have one machine out because not that many leaves yet, so we have, uh, one machine has been out. And probably next week, we'll start the second machine, uh, to go out. We are finalizing the Eileen and Gloria project by pouring the aprons that are concrete and having a contractor come in and do the asphalt, so they have to be done. The only thing that will be left on that project will be in the spring. We'll have to do the restoration. You don't want to do it now because, uh, a lot of that will settle. It doesn't make sense to finish it. And then we have a lot of holes, so we'll wait till spring to do the, uh, restoration part. Tomorrow, tomorrow morning, 8 o'clock, as I was anticipating, the council will pass the full-depth, uh, legislation. I have a pre-con meeting for, uh, Mid-Ohio, and I'll know better which streets will be available. I told them to try to do maybe one here, one there, you know, to give every street or somebody in the neighborhood some type of repair. So, uh, I'll know better tomorrow, uh, which areas they're going to address. Uh, and, and as everybody knows, we have 65,000, so even in the bid package, we stated they could only do as much as the budget allows, okay? And then after that, uh, again, what I want to remind everybody is about keeping the leaves out of the ditches. By putting leaves in your ditches, you cause a lot of problems. I mean, all the way down the road, you know, and you also mess up the machines. Because once them leaves get wet, it does, it does bring a lot of damage to our machines. So we're asking again that nobody puts some, uh, leaves in their ditches and that nobody puts them around the mailboxes either, because we can accidentally hit them because we have to get so close to them with the boom. And while I'm talking about the mailboxes, winter's coming. So I'd like to have people to check your mailboxes for rotted posts, loose screws, rusted screws, or if your, your box is in bad shape. Because this year, as I stated at the last council meeting, I'd like to follow old-out rules. In other words, it, it has to be hit for us to replace. I mean, snow coming off the plow. If your, if your mailbox is in good shape, that's not going to hurt. So, uh, everyone needs to, uh, and we're going to have a couple of nice days, so this would be the right time to, uh, check that out. Because you know, winter's right around the corner. That's my report right now, Mayor. We did some additional ditching this week. We did a little bit of work on North Bedford to try to relieve that. Uh, we're going to try to do a little bit more. We're going to do as much as we can with time and what weather allows. And that's my report.
I did receive a letter today from Gloria and Eileen from one of the people that live there stating what a wonderful job and that we have a great crew and they're doing good work. It mentioned some of the crew by name. I'll give that information to you tomorrow.
Yeah, and we do have a good crew.
Yes, we do. Mike?
Before we go to Mike, can I ask one quick question, Jim? Street striping? That's occurring?
Yes.
It's, we might just want to let everybody know, because it's at night and all of a sudden you come up on these orange cones. I came out of the rec center last night and there were people who were driving excessively down 82, and I think they were shocked because the right lane was closed because there were orange cones. We are doing street striping. You gotta, would, would ask that you pay close attention when you're driving and obey the, the street signs and the speed limits. But don't be shocked if you see these orange cones. That's what's out there.
They're working through the night. Hopefully, they'll be done pretty soon.
Okay, Mike, you're up.
Thanks, Mayor. GFS was at the Planning Commission. They had some minor adjustments, uh, to their site that we had to, uh, accomplish. There was some exposed concrete on the walls that they're going to take care of with landscaping. We should be finishing up that project even though they're open. We gave them occupancy at a time limited, so they're finishing up some of the site work along with the fencing that's going along the walks. GetGo, uh, as you explained, it's an exciting project. We have meetings set up with them next week and we're going to be doing, uh, giving our thoughts on the Western Reserve styling in the town center so that they can make their changes. Nick and I have been busy, as well as Jim also, with getting, uh, meeting with the I-271 project, going to progress meetings, soliciting for pavement cores, which Nick Feeney had talked about. And then also we contacted, I contacted Summit County Engineers' Office as council requested in regards to the pavement rating system. Didn't get a call back yet, so hopefully I'll set up a meeting with them, but it looks like they are using JG3 consultants every year out of Heath, Ohio. So we're looking into, to see what that entails, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Angelo?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a reminder to everyone, Trick or Treat is going to be observed in the city of Macedonia on Friday, October 31st from 6 to 8. So if you have kids or you want to participate in handing out candy in the community, that is the time to do it. Nordonia Winter Craft Show is scheduled on Saturday, November 8th. That will be held at Lee Eden Elementary. That's from 9 to 2. We have about 40 vendors. If you are interested in a booth, we do still have a few spaces left, so you can contact the rec center for an application. And we are also hosting a health fair the following weekend, Saturday, November 15th, that will be at the rec center from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So we have a lot of different organizations who are involved, a lot of free screenings, a lot of people who can answer a lot of, um, questions in various medical fields, um, and that both of those are, are open, free to the... are open, free to the public. So we encourage everybody to attend or to contact the rec center for more information. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor. Engineering has been heavily involved with ODOT and ODOT's consultant over the past couple of weeks. We are currently in receipt of the design-build units for Freeway Drive that's going to accommodate the new pavement, including the turn lane onto the new ramp. We are also in receipt of waterline relocation plan on North Freeway Drive due to the foundation design of the bridge. Our waterline on Freeway Drive needs to be relocated. Also, as Mike mentioned, we had a progress meeting today with ODOT. ODOT's consultant and contractor are currently in the process of coordinating some issues with the railroad. When they start demolition of the 271 bridges over the Ledge Road area, they're going to need to close down North and South Freeway when they're hauling those existing steel beams over the railroad track. We don't have a date on when that, it's not approved right now, so I don't have the date for that, but when that does come close, we'll have a meeting with city safety forces so we can figure out what impact that's going to have to residents. It sounds like it's going to be anywhere from five to maybe even 10 days closure on North and South Freeway at Ledge Road, but I'll have more information on that as that progresses. As Mike had mentioned, we also solicited prices for pavement cores per the finance meeting last week, and we received three prices for the 14 streets that are currently on the five-year outlook. For the 14 streets, for the pavement cores that we requested, the low quote was from GEOSci and the amount of $4,950. We also had a price from Solar at $5,800 and a price from PSI at $6,495. That would enable us to get pavement samples for every road that's on that list.
Thank you. When you were talking, it reminded me, there's another reason that Ledge Road has to be open, because it is the designated detour that ODOT will be imposing when they're doing this bridge work, which is not a good thing, but we have no choice. All right. Tim?
Yes, Mayor, a couple of important dates. Our Fall Party, our annual Halloween party is October 26th. That's this Sunday from 4 till 6. A little bit of a date change there. It used to be on a Saturday night. We've now made it on a Sunday from 4 till 6. So our annual Halloween party, we'll have all of the festivities that we normally have on that night. And then, our annual pancake breakfast will be November 9th, which is a Sunday from 8:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. John?
Just real quick, Mayor. I don't know if Jim mentioned it, but with the leaves, don't sweep them in the road either. That's a no-no. So keep them out of the leaves, ditches, and around the mailboxes. And just to elaborate on the band, Mayor, I know it doesn't pertain to the police department, but I saw Dr. Clark put something out there that they qualified for the state just the other day. At the event that they were at, they won the Class A Best Music, first place, as well as Best Music Overall, and Grand Champion that night. So we have a fantastic band.
Yes, we do.
Along with a fantastic football team. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Tom? All right. Moving on, is there any unfinished business?
Making one comment about the bridge. And I know I had spoken to the chief after I'd received a couple requests to close the road again, and he had actually put out a survey, and it came up, believe it or not, 50/50, keep it open, keep it closed. There's another opportunity, and that's to work with Amtrak. There's an Amtrak train. I've ridden it, goes over that bridge twice a day at least, because it goes up to Pittsburgh. The other thing, I've reached out to the gentleman that assisted us in the quiet zone. Any of you remember, that was a pretty big challenge with the railroads, to see who he may have in a contact, that maybe there is someone else that could help us champion with the railroads to get this bridge. It doesn't need to be fixed. It needs to be replaced. So I'm hoping to get that taken care of, and we'll see if he's got any other magical numbers. And then we'll also reach out to Amtrak, because I would think they'd want to be seriously considering the bridge before they let that train go back and forth twice a day.
Very interesting. Thanks. Any other unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to mention what was mentioned before, but I think it's good to repeat this. The Longwood Manor Historical Society is presenting the dedication of the William Frulong Home in Macedonia as a national historic home. It is recognized by the National Park Service. And people are invited there. The public is invited from 2:00 to 4:00 on Sunday, November 16th. And then, after the ceremony, which will be at the rec center, there'll be actually affixing the plaque that will be put on the Longwood Manor at the site in the home. So thanks so much, and we're looking forward to having people come and see it. Thanks.
Any new business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming.